Welcome to Ed Leader with your host, Dr. Rob Jackson. Going Dr. Jackson for conversations and reflections on improving educational leadership from the classroom to the boardroom and beyond. Educational leadership is an ever-evolving opportunity to make a real and lasting difference in the lives of students, parents, and the community. And now here's your host, Dr. Rob Jackson.
Hi friends, welcome to the latest episode of Ed Leader. I'm your host, Rob Jackson, and I want to thank you for spending time with me today. We continue to be faced with unprecedented challenges. Charles Swindoll said that life is 10% what happens to you and 90% how you react to it. We didn't ask for this challenge certainly, but we're not going to lose faith in our collective ability to meet the needs of our students and families as together we hold the chaos at bay and shine a light out into the darkness, guiding our students, families, and community to the promise of a brighter future. I can't wait to share today's conversation with you. It's powerful, it's moving, and one of the most encouraging I've been a part of in quite some time. Let's get to it. Today I'm joined by an ed leader who was appointed as an at-large member of the North Carolina State Board of Education in January 2015. He graduated ninth in the class of 1983 from the United States Military Academy in West Point. He served as an airborne ranger combat engineer in the U.S. Army and is a professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. He has been a local board member and the chair of that local board of education and is currently the chairman of the North Carolina State Board of Education. He is a graduate of public schools, as are his children. I'm excited to introduce to you, North Carolina State Board of Education Chairman Eric Davis. Hello Chairman Davis.
Hello Superintendent.
I so appreciate you spending time with me and with all of the ed leaders who come together around this podcast. It's an incredible honor to be able to speak to you, particularly in this time of such great challenge for every ed leader, whether they're working in the classroom or working in the boardroom. This is an unprecedented challenge, isn't it?
It certainly is. It's a challenge, but it's also a time that's ripe with opportunity and expectation for great things for our students.
Absolutely. And you know, your message of hope and optimism has not been lost on me or my colleagues across the state as we kind of move into our conversation. I'm very mindful and grateful for our listeners outside of the state of North Carolina and we've been surprised a little bit. We have international listeners around the world and so in their systems, they may not be familiar with the State Board of Education. So if you would maybe give us a 50,000-foot view of what is a State Board of Education and kind of what are the things the State Board of Education takes up?
Certainly. Well, we are unique among our states in that in our state constitution, the one ratified in 1868, which by the way, was the one that reestablished our union between North Carolina and our sister states.
So been important.
Yes, that context I think is important. The State Board of Education was included in the state constitution as head of the public school system across North Carolina. So it's not just a state agency governed by law. It's actually formed and codified in the state constitution, which we hold quite dear as the foundation of our responsibilities. You know, we're responsible for a number of things, primarily the policy around running our statewide system policies such as teacher preparation, teacher licensure, standards of instruction, and quality of that instruction, funding and support for our school system subject to the laws of the General Assembly. Those are just a few of the many things that we're responsible for. I'd say most importantly, we are the one group of volunteers from across the state whose duty is to advocate for our students. While others may advocate for certain private interests, while others may advocate for other public interests, our constitutional responsibility is to advocate that every child in North Carolina receives a sound, basic education, which is also part of our constitution. So we hold that responsibility quite dearly. The board is made up of, let's see, 13 members, two of which are elected, the state treasurer and the lieutenant governor, by virtue of their positions there on board. And then the remaining members are appointed by the governor and ratified by the General Assembly. And our terms are eight years long and that I think was quite smart to have that term in that it spans governorships. So while we are part of the executive branch, we're appointed by the governor, ratified by legislature, our term spans eight years long. And of those representatives, eight of which come from specific districts that geographically represented across the state and the other three at large. So I think that helps to insulate the State Board from the whims of partisanship and the latest election while also maintaining clear accountability of the board to the citizens of the state and particularly to our students.
Absolutely, and thank you very much for that. Several years back, in fact, it's been quite a few years, surprisingly, 2011, I had the opportunity to serve the State Board as one of the advisors to the State Board, as the principal of the year. And I know from my experience and from being at State Board meetings and listening to State Board meetings, that the State Board of Education really takes seriously the voice of the various advisors on the State Board. Would you share with the listeners about the advisors, the positions of the advisors, and how the advisors help the State Board as you do your work?
Appreciate you asking that question because that is just a crucial group of partners that work with us and advisors. They include the superintendent of the year, the school board member of the year, teachers of the year, principal of the year, and then also two student advisors. And the meeting doesn't go by that one or more of those advisors provides us with a dose of cold reality of what's actually happening in our schools and in our districts. And they often remind us, they more often challenge us to strive longer, to reach higher, to do more for our students because they just speak the truth.
Absolutely.
And it's their perspective that they willingly provide to us each meeting that really informs our thinking. Say, one of the things I've enjoyed most about serving is not only serving with those great advisors as they've rotated in and out, it's not only learning about more about our great state, but in the time I've been on the board with some turnover, the constant thread has been regardless of geography, regardless of life experiences, regardless of political affiliation, members of the State Board hold first the interest of our students at heart. And oftentimes I'll notice that we'll be facing a difficult issue like we did in our last meeting and there'll be varying points of view and all of which will be expressed in very candid and very professional ways. But at the end of the meeting, we figure out a way to come together and move forward. And there's one particular example where two of my colleagues were on opposing points of view, very vehemently. And in the midst of that discussion, it was appropriate to take a break. And during that break, I looked over the table and those two who happened to have very opposing views were actually sitting next to each other. And they were working it out. And when we came back together after the break, they worked it out. And the rest of us said, well, if you two of y'all can work it out, we'll follow your lead. And that's just, that situation, it just happened over and over. And I give great credit to my colleagues on the board for that degree of professionalism.
Professionalism and that unifying theme around the desire to do right by children and to do right by teachers and staff members as they're doing the work of serving our communities across our great state. I certainly appreciate that. And I appreciate in the conversations and the debates that the State Board is involved in, when a pause is taken to ask the student advisor, the principal advisor, or the superintendent advisor, and it means something to me that our State Board of Education, who really could be seen as at the top of the org chart, the top of the organization chart, really ensures that they have great connections throughout the organization and doesn't lead as if they were in charge of everything, but really leads from a servant leader, and that's a bit of a cliche at this point, but from a servant leader mindset. And that seems to really show to me and I very much appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that. I think that's an aspiration we strive to fulfill each day.
All of us as ed leaders, that's exactly right. Recently, our governor Roy Cooper made an announcement that our schools were going to remain closed for the rest of the school year. And as you know, that was met with quite a bit of sadness and worry, perhaps some fear on the part of teachers and staff and parents as we worry about children who might be in vulnerable situations, who may be possibly in situations where there may be some neglect or God forbid, abuse. And in that announcement that schools were going to be closed, you were called on to make some remarks. And if you don't mind, I want to share with you some of your concluding remarks and give you an opportunity to respond to those because they absolutely resonated with me. And so in the middle of this governor's press conference, we heard from the governor and a couple of other folks, and you were called to the podium. And after working through some of the logistics, you said this, "North Carolina is home to seven majestic lighthouses, symbols of strength, hope for the weary, beacons of safety in rough waters. Like a mighty lighthouse, we will continue to stand our ground with an unwavering commitment to endure the challenges thrust upon us by COVID-19. We will rely on our resilience to maintain excellence in education while we continue to provide hope and needed support to children, families, and North Carolina's public schools." When you said that, I almost wanted to stand up and cheer, but instead I was moved so emotionally that I was just really right there with you. Why was it important to you to include that statement? And just share with me the feelings around this statement that kind of led you to share that with us.
Superintendent Jackson, the truth be told, those words were written by Dr. Deanna Townsend Smith, our Director of Board Policy and Operations, a native of Robeson County, educated by the state of North Carolina, graduate of North Carolina Central University, and in my view, just the epitome of professionalism in class. And I just got to be the person that got to read her words. But I think Deanna absolutely nailed it with the lighthouse analogy. I mean, as a native North Carolinian, there's few things that move us, either a lighthouse or Blue Ridge Parkway on either end. But here's how the lighthouse analogy landed on me. If you think about something standing tall on the remote corners or edge of our state, sending out a beacon of light, unlike the headlights of a car which provide light for the car, the lighthouse doesn't provide light for itself. It provides that light for someone out there in the darkness and on rough waters searching for safety. And the lighthouse doesn't care what size vessels out there. It doesn't care whether the person in the vessel is white or black, or Protestant or Catholic, or in the north or the south, or Democrat or Republican. It just cares about providing a path to safety. And I think that probably more than any other symbol of North Carolina epitomizes North Carolina teachers and North Carolina principals and North Carolina superintendents. Standing tall, whether this hurricane is blowing against its side, whether it's in the scorching heat of the summer, it doesn't matter what's going on. Those teachers and principals and superintendents are standing tall, sending out a beacon of hope and safety and security and care to every one of our students. In many ways, this exercise we've been involved in and continuing to feed our students is another great symbol. You know, we've got hardworking custodians and bus drivers and child nutrition workers who are exposing themselves at risk in order to feed our children. And when one of those yellow school buses press the hill and pulls to a stop in front of a home, that's not like that lighthouse, the light of that lighthouse. That bus with those meals and those instructional materials and that bus driver is sending a message that we care about you, each individual child and family across North Carolina. We care so much that we're going to put ourselves out there and bring you a meal, bring you instructional facilities, but really bring you hope. And so every one of those bus drivers represents all of us, the rest of us, in sending that message of hope and safety and future. And it's one of the things that makes me most proud to be a North Carolinian, just like those lighthouses.
Hit me there Chairman Davis. My dad would say, that'll preach, that'll preach. And it certainly will. And I'll share something with you that I think that you will appreciate because I do believe that we're serving hope when we're serving those meals. And I've had the opportunity almost on a daily basis to either in our school system, Eton Chauan School System, we have two pickup sites at two of our schools and we're delivering meals on our yellow school buses. And I can share with you Chairman Davis, that 100% of the meals I've handed to someone or I've watched a staff member hand to someone, whether that's the child or a grandparent picking it up for a child, 100% have said thank you in a real and sincere way. And when we see the children standing in the driveway waiting for the bus to pull up so they can get that lunch and Chairman Davis to see them hug a styrofoam container to their chest, you know, it's something special because it's making a difference. And I just applaud our state leaders and those who've worked really hard to remove the barriers in policy, things like allowing us to use a yellow school bus to transport meals. That's not how they were set up. They were set up for transporting pupils and there was some policy work that had to be done. And I just appreciate those who made sure that we were allowed to do what we all knew was an important and special thing to do. And so I thank you for that. But Chairman Davis, I'm not going to hold this in your past against you. I know that you were a U.S. Army airborne ranger and I say that with great respect. Now, I was in the United States Navy and so I understand, you know, Army, Navy, that's a game.
Right.
We won't get into that competition, though there's great respect between the two. But I just wonder, as we kind of think about leadership in general, what have you been able to take from your background as an airborne ranger in the United States Army into your service as a local board member and local board chair and now a member of the State Board of Education and our chairman of the State Board of Education? What about that background in the military helped prepare you for this moment and for the work you do on those boards or that board?
Well, appreciate that, yeah. And I do appreciate that rivalry we have. We're brothers throughout the year except for about three hours on one cold December Saturday afternoon. I tell you, there's sort of this perception that the military, and I'll just speak some army, is this big command and control and orders are given on top and everyone salutes and just does what they're told to do. That was not at all my experience. My experience was the combat engineer soldiers that I got a chance to serve with or some of America's finest talent. And that the reason why we win is we trust them to make the right decisions because we trained them well. We trust them to use the resources because we provided the right resources for them and we guide them along the way. But it was that spirit of my job as a leader is to expect nothing more of my soldiers than what I'm prepared to do myself, to lead by example, to get them what they need, to put them in the right position to be successful, and then frankly, to get the heck out of their way because they know what they need to do. In many ways, I'll share with you, that's the definition of a good board member. I was reminded by fellow State Board members many years ago, that the best thing you can do as a Board of Education member is find the right person to lead the system, get them in front of the leaders, praise them in public, coach them in private, get them what they need, and then get the heck out of their way. And I think that's what happens throughout our system so often is we find the right teacher, we put them in front of the class, class of students. If we can get them what we need and we can get the heck out of the way, they'll do a fantastic job. And that just rolls all the way through. And I've come to admire the superintendents across our state as really being on the front line. And I think that is the toughest job in America right now is running a public school system. And I'd put those, yourself and your colleagues in North Carolina, right up there with every airborne ranger combat engineer leader I've ever served with as having the courage to make the tough decision that's not going to please everyone, but is the right thing for your case, students, in my case, for our soldiers. And that's what leadership's all about is courage and being willing to stand your ground, make a tough decision, take the hits, but know that you did the right thing and keep moving forward.
Exactly right. I mean, and whether it's a principal releasing the teacher to do great work, like you said, praise in public and coach in private, or superintendent working with principals or board members working with superintendents all the way throughout the organization, that's really leadership 101 in a powerful way. And I take it as high praise and an amazing compliment in terms of comparing superintendents and others to those you served with in the military. We talked previously and we mentioned that serving in education and I believe also serving in the military really can be a calling, that you do it because you're compelled to do it. Something inside says, I need to be doing this work. And when we really rely on that calling to drive us in the work we're doing and to keep bringing us back to our core values and those values that you're espousing, like courage and like having the student at the center of the work we're doing and really valuing the work of the teachers, then we're at our very best. And I certainly think we're at our very best in this moment. We're seeing a lot of amazing things from public school educators.
Absolutely. And Superintendent, if I could offer one other observation, I do hold pretty personally the experience that my family and I have had in public school system. I'll tell you, growing up in Charlotte and in Lincoln County, it was always a boyhood dream to go to West Point, but never in my life did everything I could have a chance. No one from my school had ever gone there before. And it was the teachers in Charlotte Mecklenburg and the teachers in Lincoln County that gave me a great start in life. And I didn't really realize how good a start I had until I was competing with cadets from across the nation. And so I'm just incredibly grateful for the opportunity that those teachers gave me. And now my daughters have experienced in the same way. And it's just a real privilege to be able to pay the state of North Carolina back for fulfilling a boyhood dream, to be able to go to school. I wanted to serve there, I wanted to, and maybe in some way help another child realize their dreams.
Thank you for sharing that story with me and those who'll be listening to the podcast in a similar fashion. I grew up in Swanonoa, which is a very small town in the mountains of North Carolina. And in our small town, many of my peers would leave school before they graduated and go get jobs in the textile mills and actually get paid more than the teachers were, quite frankly. And that might have been my pathway except for a teacher, her name is Jackie Param, who really would not accept anything less than my best and annoyed me on more than one occasion because I had to redo some work and kept telling me, that time I was Robbie, not Rob, but Robbie, you can do better than this, I expect more. And because of her intervention in my life, I became the first person in my family to go to college. I attended Western Carolina University. I have four children and they've all, the baby just graduated from Tennessee this past week. Of course, we haven't had commencement yet, we'll have that in the future when it's appropriate. But the teacher not only changed the trajectory of one student, but truly changed the trajectory of an entire family and generations of that family. And that's the work we're involved in. The stories like you being able to live your dream and compete with other students from across the country and be so successful, the stories of children who were able to access college or great jobs or a career in the military, that's the work we're doing. And I just so admire and I appreciate the fact that you get that. And I can't wait for folks to hear this conversation, to hear your passion and who you are as a person, because you are called upon in this moment to lead the State Board in making some big decisions. We have big decisions still ahead of us in terms of trying to re-enter school and figuring out all of those sorts of policy things. And I just appreciate that at the end of the day, good people are doing their very best to take care of children. And that certainly means something to me. Well, as we kind of wind up our conversation, I wonder if you may have some sort of message or something you'd like to share with the ed leaders in the classroom to the boardroom, whether they're here in our state or around the world, particularly in this time where we do have so many challenges, such an unprecedented time. I wonder if there's some message you might like to share with your fellow ed leaders?
Well, thank you Superintendent. I just mostly want to express my gratitude and on behalf of my colleagues on the State Board and also gratitude from parents all over this state to the superintendents, principals, teachers, and other educators that are not only educating our children, but caring for them and loving them, particularly in this challenging time. Each of you are faced with your own personal challenges, taking care of your own family and dealing with all the uncertainty that we face. And to be able to deal with all that and yet still care for and love and educate someone else's child is, I think, the epitome of selfless service and of Christian charity. I think regardless of the faith that we may or may not aspire to, this is a time when it really is important to love our neighbor and education leaders across North Carolina are living that virtue hands down. I'd also just encourage you, don't ever underestimate the impact you're having. Oh my gosh, there's, just like you mentioned Superintendent Jackson, there is some child, there's more than just one child, there's many children across this state whose lives are forever changed because of that phone call from a teacher, because of that Zoom meeting, because of that letter that you've written, or that picture that you sent them, or that prayer that you said last night for that child. And you'll never, you'll never know the impact you're having. But just know that you are giving so many children, more than a fair start in life, you're giving them reason to get up in the morning and get moving and do their work and grow and aspire and believe in themselves, believe in themselves that they can do more than they believe in themselves. And I think that's one of the greatest gifts our teachers give our students is they believe in our students oftentimes before our students believe in themselves. And so let me just encourage you to continue to press on, continue to stay the course. You are our heroes, you really are. And I have no doubt that in the not-too-distant future, we'll look back and say that this generation of teachers, the principals and the superintendents took North Carolina through this storm and to a whole nother height of success. And we're all the beneficiaries of your work. So thank you.
Chairman Davis, thank you. I have enjoyed this conversation as much as any conversation I've had. And in some ways, I feel like I've been to church as we've shared at a real level what it is that we really aspire to do, who we really aspire to be. And I just appreciate your message. I appreciate the fact that when you speak, I feel authenticity from you and I see that in the service you do. And so I salute you and I want you to know that all of the colleagues I've talked to, we really appreciate what the State Board of Education is doing in terms of leading our state and really trying to keep the emphasis on our children. That's not to say we always agree with every decision you make and you wouldn't expect that, but at the same time, we always feel like it's coming from a good place. And so Chairman Davis, thank you again for spending time with me today. Thank you again for all that you're doing for the 1.5 million children across the state of North Carolina and all the educators who are blessed to serve with you. Thank you, sir.
Well, you're more than welcome and we're delighted to be on the same team with you. Take care.
I hope that you enjoyed our time together with Chairman Eric Davis. I appreciated when he described teachers, principals, superintendents, and other ed leaders as standing tall, sending out a beacon of hope and safety and security and care to each of our students. That is the work of ed leaders. I'm thankful for his encouragement and his enthusiasm for the education profession. May we each meet this challenge with all that we are, knowing that our students are worth our every effort. Thank you for spending time with me today and thank you for all that you do for every student, every teacher, and every staff member. You are making a difference. If no one else has told you, I want you to know that I believe in you. Good day.
Thank you for listening to the Ed Leader Podcast. Please subscribe to the podcast and consider leaving a review with five stars on Apple Podcasts so that we may continue to grow the Ed Leader community. We hope that you have enjoyed your time with Dr. Jackson. Until next time. Until next time.